Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. I would like to take a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez, Hernandez, I'm sorry, Hernandez.
I got a text saying he was in the waiting room.
Oh, he must have just came over and then let me check. I'm not seeing him.
Maybe in the seven o'clock meeting.
No, we have the same, we have the same.
It's the same zoom linkage, unless he's in, unless he's still stuck in the five o'clock closed session, I don't know. Might want to be good chat with him.
Bridget, I'm texting him now.
Okay, perfect.
I'll see if I could, I'll see if I can give him some assistance while you get started.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Rarback.
Yeah.
Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Count Vice Mayor Reddick.
Here.
And Mayor Brownstone.
Yeah.
That's it. So we have four currently.
All right, we have a quorum. Great. Thank you very much. So for those joining us tonight, we are having this one hour early session to finish off some items that we didn't complete from our last session. For purposes of the six o'clock session, just a little bit difference in our process. We will not have a public forum now at six o'clock here, but we will have a public forum when we resume at seven o'clock. So for now, we will be addressing two topics that we didn't last week. And we are going to begin with a presentation on Connect the Coast Side and Supervisor Horstley is here also as our guest to introduce the topic and our speakers. Thank you Supervisor Horstley.
Thanks, Mayor Brownstone. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. This Connect the Coast Side has been something that it seems like it's been with my entire 11 years I've been on the Board of Supervisors. It actually started probably shortly after in 2011. I think I'd been on the board for about one year. We finished our LCP. And one of the requirements was that we would conduct the Connect the Coast Side study. So we actually got the funding for it in 2014. Things have been a long slug and it got started and stopped and started and stopped. And any case, it got started once again. You don't need me to read any of the goals because it's pretty much in the literature on it. But you know, we have had a number of public meetings, a number of technical meetings. We have two of our staff people and I think you're going to find they are really, they are really our top flight staff people who have worked with the community and as well as technical group and with the city of Hafn Bay. Katie Faulkner is from our planning department and Chandra Singh is also our transportation specialist. I have to say that the final product, I'm really impressed and I hope you will be as well. It does talk about things like the parallel trail that both the city and the county are working on jointly that would eventually go always from Montero into Hafn Bay. And there are a number of traffic improvements. It's really difficult. Unless you can get people out of cars, it's really difficult. It's not difficult, it's impossible to actually improve throughput. And the only way to do that is really probably to have more people get out of their cars and use public transportation. So hopefully Samtrans will, will become more innovative in the future. And hopefully we'll be able to implement some changes for public transportation. But some of the intersection changes, at least in the mid-coast area, are really focused on the preferable alternative being roundabouts in areas like 16th Street, California and Cypress. So it's really a comprehensive, and again, as I say, it's really an impressive project that they have come up with. And so I got to turn it over to, I don't know if Katie is going to go first. Katie Faulkner is a really a marvelous young planner and Chandra Singh is also a really great addition to our staff as well. So don't you dare think about hiring either one of them.
Thanks so much Supervisor Horstley for that introduction. I'm going to, I know you all have a packed agenda and I would just really want to thank Jill for organizing, having us here and for the council for your time this evening. So I'm just going to share my screen, hopefully. Does that look okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you again for having Katie and I here today to provide an overview of Connect the Coast Side. Again, my name is Chanda Singh and I'm with the county's planning and building department. The 2012 San Mateo County Local Coastal Program update included a policy to develop a plan to address the cumulative traffic impacts of development in the mid-coast. And Connect the Coast Side intends to respond to this policy and serves as a San Mateo County Midcoast Comprehensive Transportation Management Plan. The plan creates an overall vision for transportation for the unincorporated mid-coast over a 30-year horizon. And it sets priorities for future investments in infrastructure and programs with a focus on safety and mobility. And implementation of the plan's recommendations will definitely require additional study, funding and partnerships. The local coastal program policy required that Connect the Coast Side include and consider data and projects in Hafn Bay in order to account for cumulative transportation system impacts on highways one and 92. So Connect the Coast Side study area, which is in yellow, focuses on all areas around highways one and 92 and includes Hafn Bay. Connect the Coast Side's policy, program and infrastructure recommendations are limited to the county's jurisdiction, which is, includes the unincorporated communities of Montero, Moss Beach, El Granada, Princeton and Miramar and the area around most of Highway 92. So the project area is noted in purple. As Supervisor Horstley mentioned, you know, stakeholders connect is very important to us as we develop the plan. And we used various methods to reach as many mid-coast stakeholders as we could, including having a technical advisory committee with representatives from agencies, including Hafn Bay and Caltrans, several workshops, presentations, focus groups and surveys. And the feedback that we gathered was used to shape the approach to developing the plan and the recommendations that should be considered by the plan. And this included rethinking our approach to performance standards in order to avoid widening Highway One and really emphasizing mode shifts to walking, biking and transit. It also includes having the plan better aligned with recommendations from previous community-based planning efforts like the Highway One Safety Mobility Study and a desire to see the county coordinate the plan and its approach with our partners, including Hafn Bay. So on that note, I just want to spend a little time talking about our coordination. We've been actively coordinated with the city since the project began. And we've described that in more detail in the final plan on page 181. We've had regular meetings with the community development and public work staff and had representatives from the city participate on our technical advisory committee. We've also actively shared feedback and data with each other to support our various planning efforts and have discussed our planned projects and policy approaches. We share a vision to reduce congestion by optimizing our transportation system for all modes of travel. And again, really focusing on walking, biking and transit and creating connected and safe infrastructure, which is really paramount to achieving a multimodal shift. So this approach is also recognized in Hafn Bay's local coastal land use plan as part of the Town Boulevard initiative. We also share a desire to reduce congestion by better managing traffic. And we are continuing to collaborate to reduce risks to the transportation system from disaster. So we're really excited to have Hafn Bay as a partner in achieving this shared vision. So I'll now share a few of the plan's recommendations and definitely encourage anyone interested to review the companion documents on Connect the Coast Side's website. As, so Connect the Coast Side recommends intersection controls north of Hafn Bay and Moss Beach and along Highway 92 to create safer conditions for all roadway users and improve intersection operations. So intersection controls like a roundabout or signal will allow drivers to more easily turn on and off the highway and for people walking and biking to cross more safely. The plan states a preference for roundabouts in Moss Beach and a signal at highways 92 and 35, but the final determination will be made based on future feasibility analyses. In collaboration with city staff, we appreciate that Hafn Bay's recently certified land use plan also recognized roundabouts as a potential option for improving safety and traffic flow. The multimodal parallel trail will be a dedicated Class One walking and biking path on the east side of Highway One, connecting all mid-coast communities and Hafn Bay. And Hafn Bay will be constructing the east side parallel trail expansion from Roosevelt Boulevard to Marata Road, which will connect directly to the county's first phase of the parallel trail from Marata Road to Coronado Street. The parallel trail is a really important recommendation to address the many existing safety concerns we heard about and will provide a very high-quality alternative to driving, making it much more feasible for residents to meet their daily needs without using a car. Connect the Coast Side also recommends completion of the coastal trail from Montero to Hafn Bay. And both the city and county have identified a need to further study the long-term alignment of the coastal trail to protect it from erosion and sea level rise. The plan recommends high-visibility marked crossings with pedestrian-activated overhead or rapid flashing beacons to connect key destinations across Highway One, such as bus stops with central commercial areas. Marked crossings are also recommended to create continuous and visible walking routes for the parallel and coastal trails. Connect the Coast Side recommends a crossing at Highway One and Marata Road, which is close to the Hafn Bay and county border. And both the city and county recognize the need to address crossings near Surfers Beach. So we intend to work closely with the city on both of those projects. Many stakeholders already ride bikes recreationally and for transportation on the coast and they share a desire for better bikeways. Connect the Coast Side recommends bike parking and bikeways throughout the mid-coast, including Class Two bike lanes on Highway One and a Class Three bikeway with widened shoulders on Highway 92. And these recommendations are consistent with the county's adopted active transportation plan and connect to improvements identified by Hafn Bay's bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Connect the Coast Side also includes a suite of programs, transportation system performance standards and intends to highlight ongoing efforts by the county and its partners. And we describe in the plan the opportunities that we can seek in collaboration with Hafn Bay to implement our shared programs and policies. So for example, we've already spoken with staff and identified a shared interest in best management practices around traffic control during large events and on data collection and analysis. We intend to take the plan to the county's planning commission and the Board of Supervisors for final adoption and approval in 2022. And with that, thank you so much for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions I have and I will stop sharing my screen.
Let me just clarify, is there continued presentation also from Katie or?
No, Katie is here to help answer any questions.
Also, got it. Okay, just wanted to make sure I saw everything.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Great presentation, by the way, and thank you so much for all your hard work on that. And anytime we see anything along the lines of connecting our wonderful coastal trails and working on it, we're pretty ecstatic. So thank you so much. Council, Vice Mayor.
I just want to say, well done. You know, I think you've covered the issue from many different angles. And I appreciate the mention of the California Coastal Trail. And just in general, the multimodal approach and looking at, seriously looking at alternatives like roundabouts. I think it's turned out well. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Councilmember Hernandez.
My apologies, I was, I was late to the presentation.
No worries, no worries.
Question, I mean, I didn't see, there's the connection. I know there was, it was talked about doing a trail, a bicycle trail from Miramontes Point Road to continue at Cameron's. Is that still going to happen or no?
So through the mayor, this is Jill Ikis, your community development director, and I'm really happy to hear the Connect the Coast Side presentation tonight along with council. The trail that Councilmember MNS notes is within the city limits. And that is part of the city's planning in both the bicycle and pedestrian master plan as well as in the recently certified land use plan. What's so notable tonight is how Connect the Coast Side has focused on the needs for the mid-coast in broad view and very specific improvements as well in different parts of some of the unincorporated community of town. But they've also really carefully connected their future facilities and existing facilities with facilities that are planned in the city, such as the east side parallel trail, which is the intended north-to-south connection on the east side of Highway One for bicycles and pedestrians within the city limits, connecting further north to the trail that Shonda was discussing. So it's part of our intended planning. It's going to be implemented in segments over time. And we're, actually, we've been receiving grants and for different pieces of it. And have, I believe even supported each other, the county and the city with grant funding to make those connections.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate that. Any other questions? City manager, is it? Here on mute, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I'd give the council members a chance to go first and I don't see any more questions. I also just want to say, great presentation. I did follow this along periodically when I had an opportunity. And I think I saw a presentation that Shonda and Katie made at probably the mid-coast community council over a year ago. I also am a supporter of roundabouts, so good to see those in there outside the city limits. Just to mention, we're looking at a possibility within the city limits. I think Frenchman Creek and Highway One is a good candidate. And so that, that's one we're going to take a look at ourselves next year. And I think that would be a really good place to start, actually. And as Shonda mentioned, we're doing, I don't know what they're called, those little mini roundabouts in neighborhoods on Poplar, which are also kind of cool. And then the second thing I wanted to mention that's somewhat related, I just got an email from the Public Works Department two hours ago, submitting the 100% design plans and specs for the replacement bridge on the coastal trail at Marata Road. So very happy to get those. They want us to review those plans and their intention is to put that out to bid as soon as possible so they can construct next summer. So applaud the county for moving that project along. Thanks again.
Thank you.
One more question. What is the cost of a roundabout when you're doing work to the, to the highway? What is the cost, like an average cost per roundabout?
It varies. I've asked the same questions.
Can I, can I answer that? I mean, I don't.
Yeah, please.
I'm not, I'm not definitive on this, but when we were looking with Caltrans at Cypress, they indicated 13 million. Now, I, that, I don't, that could be more or less, but it's, the advantage of roundabouts is that there's really no maintenance. Other than maybe, you know, you, there is maintenance basically as of the roadway, but you know, traffic lights require constant maintenance. And they also, there is an advantage of roundabouts in terms of, you know, public safety. Because when you have a, you know, red light and somebody blows a red light, you end up with these broadside collisions that are deadly. You don't have, not saying roundabouts never, it's not that they don't ever have collisions, but they're never like broadsides and they tend to be just property damage and not as significant. So there's a public safety advantage to them. There's also a long-term maintenance reduction, but they are expensive initially. You do have to get additional property and as, you know, you end up having to, you know, you make, it's essentially you have to, you're, I guess, replacing the lanes in areas that are, don't really currently have a lane. Does that make sense? Okay?
I just wanted to follow up on that really quickly.
Thank you.
Cypress example is, is in somewhat, in some ways an outlier. When we spoke with the Public Works Director for the town of Truckee, they've implemented many roundabouts up there, including on interstates. And their, their range has been significantly lower. So you know, like some could be around 2 million less. So I think it really is just depends on the circumstances as Supervisor Horstley is noting that certain locations it might require more because of right-of-way or environmental impacts.
We haven't looked at other roundabouts off of Alpine Road and La Dara and it's about 5 million. So really it's dependent upon which land you need and how much, how much roadway you have to recreate and what you have to do in terms of lighting. So it's really is a very, very.
I promise you all, we will definitely have a workshop in the future on roundabouts in terms of what they look like, how expensive and who pays for it. So, but I'm just happy to see that's being considered. And I would love to move on right now because I know we have a few more agenda items. And I just really want to thank Supervisor Horstley and Shonda and Katie for joining us this evening.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's what we have for proclamations and presentations this evening and I think we can move. City manager update, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I do have three quick announcements. I promise they'll be quick. As you can see, we have two items left on your special meeting between six and seven tonight. So it's our commitment to try to do those two items about 15 minutes each. The announcement I want to make has to do with that, that agenda planning. Members of the public might have noticed and your council certainly noticed that the second item on the, on the special agenda tonight, 1B vaccinations, we also put a placeholder at the end of your regular seven o'clock meeting. The intention there was if you are unable to finish the deliberation, discussion and direction on the vaccination item during this, during this timeframe from six to seven, you have the option to trail the discussion to the end of the meeting. So I just wanted to make that announcement now for the public's benefit. It would be the intention to complete the item now, but if that doesn't happen, we have that placeholder there for you. The second announcement I'd like to make, we've received some feedback in the last week or two about another public works project that we're working on, the Poplar Complete Street Project. And I just wanted to maybe correct some of the comments that we have received that are inaccurate. So first of all, the best place to get accurate information on any of our projects is on our website. So for this project in particular, you would go to our main website, click on menu in the left-hand corner, click on Public Works on the dropdown and then click on City Projects on the dropdown. Once you get the list of projects, this project is actually called the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project. When you go to that project and scroll down, there's a complete set of plans on the website. They're very user-friendly and they're very easy to read. They're color-coded and they're there for the public so they can understand what's in the project. These are preliminary plans. The confusion came up, or at least some of the feedback we got was on the removal of trees. And I just wanted to clarify and it's very clear in the plans, I think, that the tree, there's six trees that are proposed to be removed. And they're all on the corner of Maine and Poplar. What would be the south westerly corner of Maine and Poplar. These are London plane trees. And if you take a look at them, I think many people would agree they're not in the best shape. They have been topped numerous times because the wires go right over them. And so that is an area where there's an opportunity to, to provide a safer access for pedestrians. So those are the only six trees that are intended to be removed in the project. There are no trees, no trees on the westerly side of Highway One on Poplar that are proposed for removal. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. And again, encourage members of the public to check our website or contact our Public Works Department. And then finally, last announcement has to do with some closures on Highway 92 that just came to our attention. And I'm going to kick this over to Maz. Maz, if you could just make the quick announcement on those closures for the public's edification.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public, I'm Maz Musorguini, I'm a city engineer with Hafn Bay. And I just wanted to make an announcement. We received a late notice yesterday afternoon about the PGE work that's been happening on State Route 92, about a mile and a half east of Hafn Bay, near the most farms. There, they have had one lane closures from the hours of 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM. And currently they have, they're looking at continuing that work from until December 22nd. We have reached out to PGE and talked to them about the hours. Obviously, the notice came late. We were unaware of this work starting on Monday as well. The notice notification came a little late and we've been talking to PGNI about alternative means of work and seeing if they can actually utilize night hours instead of doing it during the daytime. We're still waiting to see if that's going to be something that'll happen. But we understand the impacts to everyone and we ask folks to remain patient and calm. And we're going to work with PGNI to see if we can change those hours.
What they're doing actually, just curious.
They're doing some underground utility repairs. So it's important work. It's, it's important work that's necessary for the longevity of the infrastructure. But unfortunately, the, obviously there's an obvious impact and we're hoping that they can fix that for us.
Great, great.
And that completes our announcements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thanks Maz, thanks Maz. Okay, we're going to move on to resolutions and staff reports. And our first item of the evening is adopting a resolution for a public art policy. And we will first hear a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just make a very brief introduction. Happy to be in front of you tonight. The public art policy is really the first step in moving towards providing and acquiring more public art for the community's enjoyment. And it's an important step because it provides a process for the city to evaluate and manage public art. And this is something that has been a priority to the council and to our Recreation Commission for some time. And I'm really grateful that we've been able to carve out the time this year to do this work. And especially grateful, you'll be hearing from Victor Gaetan, our community services analyst tonight. He has done a ton of work on this and I think has brought forward a really great policy. We've worked closely with the Recreation Commission and we think we have something that will be helpful in the city's work going forward. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Victor for his report and we're happy to take questions afterwards.
Thanks. Welcome, Victor.
Thanks, Matthew. All right, can everyone see the screen?
We can.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, Mayor Brownstone. Members of the council have to be here tonight to present the public art policy. So starting with a bit of background, as many of you may know, the city of Hafn Bay currently has several pieces of public art in its collection, most of which include sculptures that were donated to the city over the years and were installed on city-owned property. The city currently has no formal policy governing the management, maintenance or record-keeping of current artwork or processes for commissioning new artwork, except of current artwork or processes for commissioning new artwork, accepting loaned or donated artwork or managing funds for public art. Now, some of you may remember that earlier this year, the council was presented with and adopted the public art deaccession policy. That policy governs the process for moving or relocating public art. And we elected to separate that piece of policies from this greater policy, partly to not make this policy too cumbersome. But also there were certain factors that necessitated that policy going through first. Particularly, you might remember that because of the creation of the new Southern Gateway in the city at the end of Main Street and Highway one, we did have to remove the Half Moon sculpture. And so we wanted to make sure that the deaccession policy was in place in order to go through proper channels to remove that piece of artwork. And following the approval of the, of the deaccession policy, the next step was to draft a more general and comprehensive public art policy. So the first draft of that policy was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission in August of 2021, where city staff received feedback from the commission and worked on incorporating that feedback over the next few months. And then a second draft of the policy was presented to the commission in November of 2021, where we received approval from the commission. Part of the process also included outreach to local art groups like the Coastal Arts League, Boys and Girls Club, Hala's and Half Bay History Association, and soliciting feedback from them. Now, jumping right into the policy. Public art can contribute to the cultural and economic vitality of the community and enhance the quality of life in a city. And the purpose of this policy is to provide a process through which the city can commission public art projects and accept or deny gifted or loaned artwork. And broadly, the scope of this policy is to provide procedures for city responsibilities, beginning with the funding, commission, submission, evaluation, acceptance or denial of public art, as well as installation and maintenance, and if necessary, removal, which is why we have a deaccession policy. And this policy may also be subject to future updates and edits following the potential development and implementation of a public art master plan. That would be a much more comprehensive process and plan that would absolutely include a lot more public outreach and input. And that would, you know, potentially include specifics on locations for installing public art, actual ideas for public art projects. But that's just in the future and any edits to a master plan would be included in, an update in the policy. Now, similar to the deaccession policy, the Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation Commission will oversee the public art program in the city and make recommendations to the council for final approval. Although in certain situations, the Architectural Advisory Committee and/or the Planning Commission or other agencies may be a part of the process if need be. And here we broadly have all of the sections of the policy, which I'll, I'll go through briefly. First, we have the section on artist selection for commissioned art and the section for loaned or donated artwork. These two sections include specific criteria, requirements and procedures that must be followed when commissioning art or accepting loaned or donated artwork. And they just really go into detail into the processes for those two. Next, we have a section, a section for site selection. And when determining a potential site for citing public artwork, there are several considerations that are included in the section, which include public safety, the visibility of a site by the general public, the relationship and compatibility of the artwork in the site and/or the theme or relevance to the community and the site, among many others. This policy also includes policies and procedures regarding installation and maintenance of artwork. Namely, once the city council were to approve a piece of artwork, it would then be owned by the city and the city's responsibility to maintain. Although we did include in the policy that we do ask any artist or donor to include specific maintenance instructions for our work to make sure that we don't accidentally spray some cleaner and all of a sudden the paint starts dripping off. We want to make sure that that's, that's in the specifics. In the next section, it is recommended to create a public art fund. And it's recommended that the city establish a public art fund for the exclusive use of public art projects in the city. And the purpose of the fund is to house contributions made by the city council, any gifts, grants, donations or other art-related revenue. And only expenses directly related to the design, fabrication, installation of artwork are permitted to be paid from the public art fund. Next, we did mention removal of artwork, although we just made a reference to the deaccession policy since we have that already. We also included a section on public art on private property. Occasionally, the city may desire that public art be cited on private property. And in those instances, the city would enter into an agreement with the private property owner. And each of those agreements would be very individualized for the specific needs of each piece of property. And lastly, at the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission, we did include a section on record-keeping and inventory. Unfortunately, the reality is that there hasn't been that good a record kept with a lot of the artwork that we have already. We've had to do a deep dive and dig and find information, which we've luckily been able to find on the current artwork that we have in our inventory. But moving forward, we definitely wanted to make sure that we had specific information, including the artist or donor name, contact information, the date of the commission acquisition of a piece of artwork, information about the history and facts of the piece of artwork and detailed information regarding the maintenance of the artwork as previously mentioned. And that is the whole policy. And I'm happy to answer any questions or go back to any slides or answer anything more specific on any of the sections that I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Any questions from council members? Council member Rarback. You're on mute. You're on mute, Council Member Rarback.
Victor, is the Black Lives Matter mural that's currently on City Hall, is that considered public art or not?
It is.
Okay.
I will point out on that particular piece of public artwork, there was a resolution that the council adopted that governed kind of the future of that, of that piece of public art. And so this, this policy wouldn't necessarily apply to that specific piece of artwork.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Victor. Would anyone like to make a motion? Sorry?
Move approval.
Second in hand?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
And Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And thanks again, Victor, for a great presentation. Appreciate it. We'll now move on to item 1B, which is regarding vaccinations. We're going to receive a staff report on the status of vaccinations and will provide further direction regarding the mandating of vaccinations for city employees and contractors. So first we'll hear a staff report.
And that's me. Good evening, Mayor Brownstone and council. As you may recall, at the November 2nd meeting, Councilmember Rarback asked that a discussion be had regarding a mandate for vaccination. We put that on the agenda for number, for November 16th. And of course, you all remember, we actually pushed it to tonight. So as to assist the council with the ongoing discussion or with the proposed discussion, I would like to share some information that was in the staff report, but some additional information that's much more recent to help with the conversation. And of course, we'll be here to answer any questions, as will Catherine, our city attorney. So first of all, I, when, when the vaccinations were first available, we actually, within the city, strongly encouraged staff to receive their vaccination. And city administration made a commitment and department heads worked with the staff to actually allow them to schedule their appointments during work hours and also to take any necessary time off if they had any side effects from the vaccination. In September, the California Occupational Safety and Health Standards Board, which is CAL OSHA, issued a prevention emergency temporary standard. This was the first one mandating that all businesses track employees' vaccination records and stop short of mandating vaccines for all employees. Currently, Human Resources, which is me, is handling the collection and management of these, of this information and has had no issues to date. We put, I put together a PowerPoint of some other additional dates so that we could easily track them because there's a lot of information going on. So also in September, President Biden issued an executive order, as you may be aware, requiring, this was the first of many to come on mandates, but this one required contractors that worked with the federal government to ensure their workers were vaccinated against COVID and follow masking and social distancing policies. Following that, as I mentioned previously, November, on November 4th, Councilmember Rarback requested that we consider a vaccine mandate for city staff and city contractors. Also on November 4th, OSHA, this is the federal, federal OSHA, issued an emergency temporary standard requiring all private employers with 100 or more employees to ensure all employees are vaccinated or test, to ensure all employees are vaccinated or tested weekly. Along this same time, well, actually in October, the county of San Mateo actually declared, announced that they were developing a policy, a similar policy for all their county employees. And after much meet and confer, they actually went active on November 16th with their policy. So the county is now active in not, in asking employees to get vaccinated or they are actually mandated to get a weekly test. And so then, moving forward, Biden issued another executive order on September 9th. Actually, I'm sorry, that is the same slide. I'm losing track of the slides. No, I'm sorry, Matt, you go back. So after the county, the one other, the one other mandate was CMS, which is the, which is the, I'm sorry, CMS, the Medicare and Medicaid, Center for Medicaid Services required, this is the federal branch, required that all Medicare suppliers and some Medicare Medicaid providers to ensure their staff are fully vaccinated by July 4th, 2022. So at this time, we know that there are three federal mandates that involve contractors, employers who have over 100 employees and medic, and healthcare providers, healthcare workers and providers. So now we can go to the next slide. So, and there also has been some challenges that the federal government has, has faced. The CMS vaccine mandate, which was for the healthcare workers or anybody that provided Medicare service, was nationally halted in a federal district court in, at the end of November. The Federal Appeals Court has issued a stay freezing the federal OSHA's emergency temporary standard that required the companies with at least 100 employees to be vaccinated or tested weekly. And finally, a federal court has issued a nationwide injunction against the vaccine mandate for federal contractors. So all three steps that the federal government took have actually been challenged in court. Just moving forward in terms of what the city will do, anything beyond what we've already announced to staff would require a meet and confer. And just for information's sake, the county, when they actually provided their policy, it involved multiple meet and confers and their policy was a result of a lot of the union groups stating that if they mandated the vaccine, they would actually fight the policy. So that is why the county came to a compromise with the mandating vaccines or, I'm sorry, a vaccine or a weekly test. And of course, the, the issues they've had have been logistics, providing enough testing sites, the, just the standard kind of things you do when you have 6,000 employees. So, so that is the information I have regarding, regarding what the up-to-date information regarding vaccine mandates. And so I will turn it over to you, Mayor, for the discussion. And of course, myself and Catherine are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any clarifying questions and also Catherine, do I need public comment on this?
Yes, I'm creating clarifying questions.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Just wanted to double check. Any clarifying questions from, before we move on to public comment and then we'll come back for our own conversation? Okay. So if anyone would like to comment from the public, I see one hand so far. Two hands. Okay.
Right.
Anybody else? Let's set the timer, Bridget, for two minutes for comments.
Okay.
And let's go.
Okay. And two minutes is set and the first person to have is Half Moon Bay Bridge.
Sorry, I gotta change that. Am I there?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, thanks. Sorry. So I realize we're slowing uphill here and it is extremely unlikely that you are collectively going to move to implement a mandatory policy. But I think it's important to understand that the county's policy doesn't protect us from anything. You are able to transmit the virus for up to two days before you will test positive. And you won't test positive until you have already been contagious for two days. So that means that public-facing people who are interacting as part of their profession, which they chose, who are interacting with the public who test or who get the infection, for example, on a Monday or Tuesday, will not have that infection detected until the following Wednesday with whatever delay is added to the test, meaning that they are going to infect other people. And that's really the only thing I want to offer here and hopefully get you thinking both outside the box and at this, from a slightly different perspective. At no other time in my life would an individual be allowed to potentially transmit a potentially fatal disease to other people while working for the government. I realize we're in politically challenged times and I'm fully aware, as you all are, of how we got here. But you are ultimately responsible for the health and safety of everyone in Half Moon Bay. The bottom line is, if you don't mandate vaccines, it is going to happen. Someone from the city or working as a contractor for the city is going to infect someone else. And in that chain of events, sooner or later, someone's going to die. And that's what I think your job is to prevent. Again, I realize this is a difficult, banana to peel. So I'll leave you to it, but I hope you'll take that to heart because if we can't get these things right, then all the traffic circles in the world don't really mean much at the end. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next person we have is Stacy Sable.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Stacy Sable. I was one of the 18 people that submitted a letter on Sunday to the council members and everyone here. And I would like to speak on our behalf and just hit some of the highlights of that letter, but I really implore you to take a look at it in detail because there's a great deal of data that is cited in that letter. So we oppose the vaccine mandates because we see them as neither advisable nor practical. So we oppose the vaccine mandates because we see them as neither advisable nor practical. Uh, the Biden vaccine mandate, as you know, was recently halted, uh, as was already described. My body, my choice and the right to health privacy are hard-won and important civil rights with far-reaching implications and society should not be so eager to toss these rights aside because of exaggerated fears of the unvaccinated. In fact, asymptomatic persons cannot transmit the virus as CDC themselves conclude. The COVID vaccine can be harmful or deadly. The CDC's vaccine bears database, which is the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. Their only database like this records a million adverse events and nineteen thousand deaths due to the vaccines themselves. Pharmaceutical companies have no liability for the COVID vaccine-related injuries or deaths. And the risk of dying from COVID nineteen is exceedingly low. In fact, the average age of someone dying from COVID is in fact oddly older than the average age of life expectancy if you look at the data. The effectiveness of the original COVID nineteen vaccines is declining. Um, while the vaccines may help to alleviate severe symptoms and decrease the risk of death, it's well-known they don't stop the vaccinated from contracting and spreading the virus. And, and vaccinated people are getting hospitalized and uh, COVID cases are surging in the five most unvaccinated states. And lastly, implementation of the vaccine mandate is impractical and severely limits the city's ability to do business with good reputable firms. We hope you read our letter in detail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Angela Bolton.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members for having us here tonight. Uh, my concern is the proposal of the COVID nineteen vaccine mandate uh, for the employees and contractors of the city, and it's my request that you choose not to support them.
And then speak.
Pardon? Um, I wanted to point out a couple, well, you, you already mentioned actually the, um, different, you know, OSHA and Biden's proposals being blocked. Um, I also wanted to just point something out. Um, there are many doctors, including Jay Bhattacharya. He's a Stanford, Stanford Medical Professor and Epidemiologist. And he, what they're saying is the vaccine is a matter of personal health, not public health. So unlike most of the other vaccines, it's been shown repeatedly in our literature that being COVID vaccinated does not stop infection or transmission. For these reasons, the vaccine does not contribute to public health and it is a personal health choice. And again, it's whether or not you're vaccinated, you know, this can be transmitted. So, and then this is an interesting thing. I'm gonna try and say it fast. Regarding discrimination, there's a concern about that about seventy percent of blacks refuse the vaccine. There was a study many years ago that lasted about forty years of the Tuskegee uh, syphilis trials in which, um, they were trying to figure out the natural history of the disease. Anyway, these people were not treated for their syphilis. And so it's, it's a, you know, a longstanding kind of hesitancy with medical treatments. And I feel like doing this mandate would discriminate against African Americans that may apply or want to work with the city. So anyway, I extend, understand you may want to make a good example to the community. Um, however, with most, well, I just think each person that made the choice to work for the community or for the city uh, was able to choose their vaccine. It was their choice and I think it should always be their choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, um, speakers, and that we will now close our public comment section and now open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Rarback.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, since I was the one who suggested this, uh, I want to make it perfectly clear that I take the responsibility for public health and safety extremely serious. Uh, that's why, uh, in August, uh, we tried to get, uh, Councilman Jimenez and I tried to get a, a public safety department. This is part of that movement to help protect the health and safety of our community. I, I understand about the, the county mandate. Uh, but as, uh, one of the speakers pointed out, it is entirely possible to, uh, test, uh, negative for the virus and, and still infect other people. And I don't want our contractors, our sheriff's deputies, our people who work for the city to, uh, infect other people. That's just, um, wrong. And, um, if you don't believe me, uh, I use as an example our former president who tested negative uh, for the virus and in fact, in, infected probably hundreds of other people. So I really think that we should direct our staff to require that anybody who works inside the city limits, uh, for the city as a contractor or an employee, uh, be required to be fully vaccinated and, and not just test negative, but be fully vaccinated. So that's why, why I put this on the agenda and that's why I take this very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rarback. Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Jimenez.
Uh, thank you. Ha. Remember when we had a, the pumpkin festival on the agenda? And we had to cancel the pumpkin festival because of, uh, you know, we were, we had a fear that our community could get a no, exposed, you know, to COVID nineteen. We were thinking about the health of our community. It's the same thing, thinking about the health of our community. From, uh, one of the speakers, I heard a couple of interesting things. You know, talking about people that actually have died from that vaccine. I personally don't know anybody or do you know anybody that died from that vaccine? But I personally knew people that died from COVID nineteen in our community. I mean, I'm sure the statistics are right, you know, there's some, there maybe some people have might have a reaction to the vaccine. But I haven't heard of anybody in our community. I mean, I have heard people maybe having, uh, some symptoms, you know, some, uh, high, you know, um, fevers, uh, body aches, but that's about it. I don't hear, I haven't heard of anybody dying from the vaccine. There's also, when it comes to the testing, there's also the, the false negative and the false positive. You can get them. You know, so that those, if you, if you have a false negative, you know, that means you can still have COVID. And you can still pass it. You will not know you have it. You have a false positive, you know, you're gonna be in quarantine for two weeks. And you don't have it. So there's a lot, you know, for me, making sure that the, our community receives a vaccine is a public safety, the health of our community. I personally, with, together with other members of the community, have been advocating for community members to receive the vaccine. People and our food. You know, essential workers, farm workers, making sure they receive the vaccine. Right now, we actually, we are working on, uh, community members receiving the booster, the third shot to make sure that they're healthy. So we, if I'm, uh, advocating for our community members to receive the vaccine, you know, I have my vaccine. All of my family members have the vaccine. So I expect, you know, uh, city staff, city employees, contractors, to receive the vaccine. Is that this show that you could actually still, you still get, uh, you know, COVID nineteen after you, uh, get the vaccine? It shows that it is possible. People have gone COVID nineteen after receiving the vaccine. But the symptoms comes to a minimum compared to, you know, like I said, I know people that, I know the family members, you know, that passed from, uh, from COVID nineteen. You know, we are lucky we have the vaccine in our community. Other countries, we talk about other countries, you know, I mean, there's a, yes, go across the border, down southern border. There's still a lot of people wish they had, they could get the vaccine. There's still people dying to this day. You know, I follow, you know, what goes on in Mexico and different areas of Mexico. But people don't have the resources. They're still dying from COVID nineteen. Now we have the opportunity to get the vaccine and we're not gonna take it? How is that possible? The, the interesting thing that I heard, you know, can I, I heard that before somewhere, Logan, you're, uh, my body, my choice. You know, comes around, you know, when, uh, I know when it was talked about, you know, the, uh, you know, that giving women the right to decide either we have a, an abortion or not. And some of these, some of the same group of people that say, you know, my body, my choice for the vaccine were the same group of people that were not okay with, you know, women receiving, you know, going through an abortion. That was just, you know, I don't know, it, it was just a connection when I heard that. But in this case, we're talking about the vaccine keeping our community safe. Was it difficult to receive the vaccine? You know, public safety, public health. Be glad you have that, you know, you have that vaccine available for you. Other countries, they don't have it. Families are dying, children are dying. So I'll say, you know, mandate to, uh, city staff, contractors, anybody that comes to work in Half Moon Bay to be vaccinated. I'm not okay with the test vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Um, I'm gonna do a little process check here. Seven o'clock. I don't think we are going to finish this right now during this first session here. So we do have some choices because, um, you know, we still haven't done public forum consent calendar. It's part of our seven o'clock piece. And we have a number of other items, uh. So let me just check here. Okay. So we can continue and try and finish this off now. And people are joining our seven o'clock meeting and then do public forum. Um, or we could stop now and take on our other items and then add this on as city manager, as I mentioned earlier, as item three A. Any thoughts?
Yes, um, I don't know that there's a whole lot more to discuss. Um, I'd like to say something very quickly about the vaccine and I am definitely for the mandate. Um, if other council members don't have a lot to add, perhaps we could finish it now. And, um, I'll, I'll reserve my comments until I hear the consensus.
Okay. Um, Councilmember.
I would prefer to continue it, but I'm happy to discuss my point of view at this point and I'm not in favor of the mandate. I would be willing to entertain a policy similar to the counties. You know, there's increasing evidence that even if you're vaccinated, you can still be a vector for the disease. It, it doesn't necessarily stop breakthrough infections. So we don't want to create a false sense of security. I believe in vaccination. I'm vaccinated. I would recommend it to anybody. I would like to know from city staff, what do we require in terms of masking?
Currently, uh, oh, I, there's an echo, sorry. Currently, um, if you are coming into City Hall to work, you are required to wear a mask at your desk, uh, both in City Hall and the annex and in, in, um, Ted Adcock Center as well. Um, so our staff are wearing masks while they're in the building. And we now have our telecommute policy, which kind of softens it a bit so that people can work from home fifty percent of the time as well.
Contractors coming into any of our city facilities are required to wear masks.
Yes, they are.
Yeah. So I, I totally support, you know, a mask mandate. I don't know if we actually mandate that or whether it's just a policy, but I certainly support the, uh, the mandating of masks. Um, I, you know, was it the issue of the private contractors up in the air because of the various lawsuits? I wouldn't want to wait and hear what the courts say about that. Uh, right now, I'm only in favor of going only so far as, as the county. And then making sure that we're mandating, you know, masks and social distancing. You know, I think masking has proven to be about the single most effective thing we can do daily in our interactions with people. And I totally support that. But as for a mandate now, I, I just don't see that it's feasible. And with the court's ruling, I'd like to wait. So I'm not supporting a mandate at this time.
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna go for a little more clarification here. The county, unless I'm wrong, so let me know. My understanding, the county does have a vaccine mandate. Or the choice is get vaccinated or get tested once a week. So really what we're discussing here is which mandate, you know, are we talking, you know, are, do we want to move forward with? A, the county mandate, which is get fully vaccinated or get tested or, uh, mandate B, no choice of getting tested and you have to get fully vaccinated. Um, that's, so I just want to clarify for us and the public that they're both vaccine mandates we're talking about. And, um, so, because it's starting getting a little bit confusing there.
And Mayor Brown, Mayor Brown, just to add to that, the federal, Biden's federal mandate is actually either be fully vaccinated or be tested weekly as well.
Right. And as you mentioned, I also want to just reiterate, uh, Lisa, what you said. Either way, this has to be reviewed with unions, correct? Now, in the case of the county, um, at least what I read in the paper was, for example, the sheriff's department says that they'll go along with the county of having the choice. And I believe that was negotiated with their union. So let's just be really clear here. If we, if we say we will not allow for the testing as an option, then we can have unions, not the sheriff's unions suing us. So is, I am saying, is that where, you know, is that where we want to go? I'm just saying that's because the sheriff's hands are tied by the union regardless of what, you know, the sheriff himself might think. This was a union negotiated piece. So, um, so it's just something to think about, what we want to take on um, in terms of what we could do now and at least move forward with a mandate similar to the county. And I think depending on as things move forward, it could be the county could very well go for a full vaccination. And frankly, I'm not really satisfied with the term fully vaccinated because I, what I'm seeing, if we really want to be on the cutting edge, it's fully protected and the CDC has recommended a booster if it's been over two months since you had a Johnson and Johnson or six months since you've had either Pfizer or Moderna. And that's where everyone's going. I mean, the CDC actually recommends all adults get a booster. So if you really want to talk about fully protected, it's making sure people, you know, get a booster. And, uh, if we're gonna go that route. So, you know, there's a number of options here, um, and I am concerned about, you know, you know, do we mandate this and run the risk of getting sued by unions or let the county deal with that aspect of it? From, you know, where they're going with it. Um, and those are things I think we need to consider. So, um, Councilmember Penrose, you have more to add?
Yeah, I haven't.
Yeah, I haven't had my say yet.
Yeah.
As a physician, as a 78-year-old woman, as a resident of Half Moon Bay, I think it is an ethical and a moral decision, not a political decision, how we go about making this decision. And my belief is that the vaccine works. It has been protecting people. It has lowered the risk of death, has lowered the risk of contagion. It hasn't made it disappear. There is no 100% cure, we know that. But the best that we can do is we can protect ourselves and our fellow citizens by asking for the vaccine mandate. And I am fully in favor of requiring vaccine unless someone has religious or medical reasons why they cannot take it. And in that case, weekly testing. That's my opinion, and it's not gonna shift because of a threat of lawsuit from anybody.
Well, it's not, excuse me, it's not just a threat of lawsuits, it's also the possibility that sheriffs, you know, won't agree to it because they're not bound by it. So, so we will potentially have those union employees refusing
Right.
To get vaccinated.
Right. It's no reason not to do the right thing.
And what, so what do we do in those situations if they refuse to get vaccinated? I'm sorry, you just got muted again, Councilmember Penrose.
We don't allow them to come into the city.
So we wouldn't have any protection from the sheriffs, is that in that situation?
Yeah, we'd have to hire other, other police officers. We'd be forced to.
Okay. Councilmember.
Yeah, I would support the county's approach with vaccine or testing, you know, as the county has framed it in their ordinance.
Okay. Councilmember.
As Councilmember Penrose just said, if the sheriff who's supposed to protect the health and safety of our community refuses to have his deputies be fully vaccinated to protect the community, then